Please stand for the invocation Pastor Bobby Vitek Holy Ghost leader in church and please remain standing for the pledge.
Good morning, y'all.
Morning.
Hey and Happy New Year. No, I'm gonna say Happy New You, alright? You know, so many times, so many times we think about, we want a Happy New Year. We want a happy new circumstance. We want something to change out there, but maybe that change starts with us. You know, the Bible says, "Old has passed away, behold, the new has come." Jesus says, "I will make all things new." So, maybe a Happy New Year starts with a Happy New You. Me and you. Let's pray. Good and gracious God, we thank you for your mighty word and for your son, Jesus. We pray, oh Lord, for our city. We thank you, Lord, for our leaders. We pray, oh Lord, you pour your Holy Spirit into each and every one of us so that we may be the best that you have called us to be. Lord, your word says, "If you ask for wisdom, that you will give it." So, Lord, we just pray for that wisdom that be bestowed upon them, that they may pour it out upon us in decisions that they render. If you give an honor, glory, and praise, we thank you, God, for this community. It's in Christ Jesus' name we pray, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Item four ceremonial matters, proclamations, and employee recognition. Mayor, we're gonna hold on employee recognitions. We have a couple of really special ones coming up. So, we're just going to recognize new employees, and I've asked a couple of department directors to do that for, I think, two or three employees today. Chris, Anna, I don't know which one of you wants to kick off, but go ahead.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This morning, I have the privilege to announce or recognize a new employee in the water department, Francisco Ramirez. Francisco is a high school graduate here locally. Moved to the San Antonio area for a couple of years. Started at Albany Engineered Composites. He's been there since 2013. And recently, wanted to get closer to home. He'd been commuting from Harper to Burnie every day, and so obviously that does get old. So, we're happy to have him back here in town, working for the water department. His first week of employment, I've heard nothing but good things, so. Francisco Ramirez.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We've got a new code enforcement officer. This was in the new, in the budget, especially pertaining to short-term rentals, just the number of code enforcement calls that we've been getting across the city. And so, we've got a new employee in Raymond Uvenus. And we've not figured out, we've got Ray Ordagon, and now we've got Raymond Uvenus, so we'll have to figure out a naming. But Raymond's been here for about seven or eight years, and lives here with his wife and kids. And is an active member of the communities, especially at St. Mary's. So, he's familiar with the streets and the people and the neighborhoods, and we're excited to get him trained up in code enforcement and on the streets soon.
Welcome, Raymond.
Thank you. I'll give an update a little bit later on a few other new positions. Again, Finance Director wasn't able to be here today. Our auditors are in the office this morning, so we'll wait on a couple of additional recognitions.
So, you want to have time later in this meeting?
I'll give an update during City Manager update on all of the positions we filled, and I'll have Laura introduce them for me. Thank you.
Item number five is council comments. Council, anyone?
I just want to bring up again my little pet peeve about the hospital sale of our community hospital. I still think it was improperly done. It is our community hospital. It was voted on by trustees that were appointed or elected by themselves, not the community, and that this should have been brought for the county. So, I don't think that's a dead issue yet, but I just want to remind people to let your voices be heard on that. Thank you.
Other comments?
Two things. One, I just wanted to flag for everyone that our next council meeting will be on Wednesday, February 8th. I just want to drill this into everyone's heads, so I don't show up at the wrong place at the wrong time. We'll be doing a Texas A&amp;M Engineering Extension Service Senior Officials Training on Tuesday, the 7th. So, we'll be meeting on the 8th. And the other thing is, one of our future agenda items is going to be looking at hotel occupancy tax dispersments within the community. We budgeted money for that. But one thing that I would like to approach is that we get some guidance from the Convention and Visitors Bureau as we have all these entities coming in with different priorities. The CBB has a lot of data to talk about what draws tourists here, and I think that needs to be part of the schedule as we approve this.
Should we request Freddie Clausen make a presentation on, to council on that? Or how do you want to get that? How do you want to disperse that information?
I would love, as part of our, I think there's like, we have the application, and then we send it out to the world where they can apply. Just as part of that timeline that we have for ultimate approval by us, that the CBB board has a chance to look at all the applications because, you know, there's nine different priorities to be able to say, hey, this should, you know, let's prioritize this, whether it's convention center, advertising, historic preservation, all those things. They have a better grasp of it. So, I guess, could I direct staff to look at incorporating the CBB into our timeline? Would that be appropriate?
Yes.
And I was going to mention, we're fast approaching making some of these decisions, so that Emily and I had a discussion last week. I think you were there too, Sharon. Where we talked about getting some of this information out there, getting CBB involved, so that we might make some decisions for around next year, you know, in terms of how we make those dispers- dispersments and make those priorities and stuff.
Any other council comments? Alright, item number six is consent agenda. I don't necessarily want to pull any. I'm not sure what the protocol is, Mick, but I would like to have some questions answered about the whole issues of street closures in a group. And the one, the other one is minutes. Did you want to have a comment on the minutes, Mayor?
No.
Okay. I would suggest you remove those that you want to have comments about, and then have the rest of the council. Okay? I'll take a motion on Route 68, consideration of the minutes from the last meeting.
Move to approve the minutes at the last meeting.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes as presented. All clear, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't have any specific issues with the other. I just want to pull it out to have some questions answered, just some clarification. Chief? Oh, go ahead, Jennifer. We have, how many? One, two, three, four, five, six? Is that right? Jennifer requests for street closures during the spring.
That's correct. And since this is probably the, only the second time I've been here with street closures for this newly seated council, any direction that you want to give me for the future on street closures? We are up to 18 total requests throughout a calendar year. Four of those requests just go to PD. If you look at the backup in your staff memo, you will see that our transportation ordinance requires anything more than two hours to come to you for approval. Anything less than that can go directly to the police chief. So, what we've historically done is taken everything through May, brought that to about the second meeting in city councils so that event organizers could continue with their planning and event logistics.
Jennifer, I'm back on council after being away for eight years, and it seems like an explosion of street closure. Of course, we want to keep everybody safe for every event. Are these all fairly well attended and lots of people and lots of coming and going events?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll go through each one, starting with item B, which is the Touch a Truck event. This is really just a contingency for this year. All of y'all know that the project at the northwest corner of Market Square is beginning. And with that fencing that was installed, I'm anticipating that we are not going to be able to utilize that grass hennig lot there on the corner of Bethany Lutheran Church. And we haven't had our first planning meeting yet, but that's coming up on January 25th. And my suggestion with my coworkers and team is going to be that we utilize market plots this year to put the large trucks and equipment so that those don't have to walk across the street. So, this is really just a contingency in case we have more pros and cons and want to continue that. We do have typically over 1,000 people that come to that event, and they are crossing that street because they obviously want to get over and see the electric department, water department. So, that one is definitely for safety. The other thing I want you all to realize is we do make each event organizer get permission or get the input or input from Bethany Lutheran Church and San Sabo Soap Company, who's a new business merchant on Austin Street. So, they've all been informed, and all of them have replied and said that they're okay with these closures. Moving on to see our Wanderlust Half Marathon. That is an event that has been going on since 2018, and each year it gets bigger. After this, last year, we did not have a street closure. And when those half marathon runners are coming back to Market Square, they have a 10K and a 5K as well, and they all leave within about an hour time period. So, what happens is those that could participate in the 5K and the 10K are trying to back out on Austin Street while you have runners trying to complete a half marathon. So, it's very dangerous, and after consultation with Chief Forhour and Lieutenant Seelig last year, we said, "We are not going to move forward with the special event application until we get a street closure approved." Item D, which is the Volunteer Fire Department Fish Fry, that again is a contingency when meeting with Paul Hahneman, who's the president of the Volunteer Fire Department. We don't know how we're going to set up the drive-through lines this year with the construction on the northwest corner. So, this was just, again, a contingency, and if we decide not to use it, we will let you know, as well as letting Bethany and San Sabo know that we're not going to be doing that. That closure will actually leave the street open all day. We're just going to cone off the parking spaces. That way, traffic can flow until we actually need the street closed at 3:00 PM. Moving on to E, this is a brand-new event. This travels throughout the country, which is the Vintage Motor Car Club of America. This event already has 68 vehicles. They just opened up registration, and the point is to be able to park those vehicles on Austin Street. That is the point of their car club get-together, and allow the public to view those vehicles. So, since we don't have a complete schedule on when the papers are going to be done, we hope that they will be done by spring break. We wanted to make sure we had a safe place to put those vehicles for that street closure request. This, item E, will not probably be a recurring event. This will probably be one time because they do move throughout the country. Item F, that is the Wildflower Run. We've been doing a street closure for them for a number of years. This is put in by the Wellness Center here in town. They typically have about 300 people. They have done some children's inflatables and amusements on Austin Street before, and we thought it was imperative to make sure that the kids were protected. And so, this is just a recurring request that we do every year for a few hours that morning to make sure those runners make it back safely. And then finally, Crawfish Festival. We all know that's a large gated event here in the community. We have shortened the hours of the closure to now ending on Sunday at 10:00 PM. It used to end Monday at 6:00 PM, so I feel that's very fair. The event organizers make sure that the streets are open when they're done cleaning up on Sunday after the event.
Remind me who sponsors the Wildflower Run?
That is the Wellness Center.
Oh, that's right. As you can tell, I'm not.
You can always start.
And the Wanderlust?
This is the first time they're coming with that street closure based on last year, when we saw the participants almost getting hit by vehicles that were backing out on Austin Street.
What group is that?
They are a for-profit called Scallywampus Events out of San Antonio. I probably only have three commercial events throughout the year, and they are one of them.
Okay. And I see a lot of city-county organizations that are benefiting here. Okay? I only have one question of the chief, and it's strictly for on-the-record information. If you mind getting on camera. If you mind getting on camera. So these street closures, are they as easy as it sounds? It's just the period of time, the hours closing off Austin Street? And it doesn't really impede traffic that much? It's not that much of an issue for those hours?
No, these street closures are minimal. We work well with the street department and with Jennifer. Street department drops them off. We set them up in the morning. Jennifer sets them up. It's very minimal.
Okay. I just wanted your opinion and Jennifer's expert opinion. Is Ms. Holly with the soap company here? Okay. I just want to give her a public recognition for her ease in giving permission and even enthusiastic permission. And also Bethany Lutheran, who not only give permission to say, yeah, we want to support these organizations and help them. So that's good community spirit. Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
All right, council, I brought it up. Anybody have anything else? Or you want to move all these at one time? All of those can, all right? These are all street closure requests as presented, so.
I think we approve items C through G on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Items B through G has been presented. Explain, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, chief. Item 7A is to consider the approval of a conditional use permit requested by James. Is it Raichinau?
Yes, sir.
Sorry?
Raichinau.
Okay, I put an extra syllable in there because I did actually learn German to sing. Raichinau.
I've heard it pronounced all kinds of ways.
As I have. Prinwalgie, Weinheimer, yeah, okay, welcome. So is this a, yeah, okay. So first we go with the presentation, Hannah, and then we do the public hearing. Is that your preference? Okay.
Good morning, Mayor and council. So this is a conditional use permit for an STR unoccupied in the R2 Historic District. It abuts Lano Street and is directly across from Buck's. We reviewed it for parking and compliance with Section 5.460, compatibility with existing uses. And we sent out the public notification. Planning and zoning recommended approval at their January 4th meeting. And during that presentation, the applicant noted that the structure is currently being used as a long-term rental. And so he had a question about, well, if I get this approval now, how long do I have to use it? So we clarified that, that the CUP must be established within two years of the approval and then the STR permit itself has to be renewed yearly. So the STR, STR unoccupied use meets the requirements of the CUP and staff recommends approval conditioned upon the review and inspection of the approval of the STR permit application and payments.
All right. Make a motion to go into public hearing.
I move that we go from regular session to public hearing.
Move to regular public hearing. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Raichinau, you want to speak to this or?
Well, my name is Jimmy Raichinau. My interest basically was, last year when I got my taxes, I said, I got to do something if my renter moves out. And so I wanted to apply for this. And if he ever moves out, then I want to have the chance to do a short-term rental. And that's my whole purpose.
Because of the increase in taxes?
Yes, sir. And my, I retired about 10 years ago and my check hadn't gone up any. And nothing else is going down.
He does own the house next door, too.
I own the house next door also.
I was going to ask you why you're going from long-term rental to considering STR. But I think you answered it.
Yeah.
Is that the only reason?
That's the biggest reason. And I had trouble getting renters over there because of across the street. I've lost, I mean, I had policemen and teachers in there. And then anytime I get somebody with a family, they don't, never stayed very long. And so because of the noise and stuff.
And because of the business that go across the street?
Right.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. I may call on you again, but we're still in public hearing. I want to ask if anyone else is here to speak on that? Anyone else here to speak on this issue? We're in public here. All right.
I move that we go from public hearing to regular session.
Second.
Motion to go back into regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Any further comments?
I'm ready to make a motion if we approve the request from Mr. Raichinau. Second.
Motion second. Were there some conditions on that that they were meeting?
Just the general conditions that they go through the inspection and apply for the permit itself.
Is that implied in the motion or does that? Okay. All right. So those conditions are implied. Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Raichinau.
Thank you.
I'm personally sorry you had to do that on the basis of taxes. Next budget season, you can ask me, how sorry are you? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, where are we? All right, item 8A, consider the approval of a construction contract award for the City of Project for Landfill. Cell number nine, Mr. Bond.
Good morning, Mayor and council. The next three items are all kind of grouped together, A, A, B, and C. They all relate to construction of cell nine at the city's landfill. So I'm going to touch on them all, but would be happy to answer any specific questions you have related to each item. So cell nine is the final cell within Phase Two at the city's landfill facility. It lies immediately adjacent to 1631. The approved fiscal year budget for 2023 included 1.425 million in funding for design and construction of the cell as well as a feasibility and long-term study for the landfill itself. We currently have about a design life of 12 and a half years of airspace remaining in the permitted cells. There's 13 total permitted cells at the facility. I just talked to our consultant and we anticipate having that discussion with y'all sometime in March, if that works. And we will include a fee analysis to look at the current and proposed fees for the facility. But after design was completed of cell nine, we advertised two separate bid packages. Those are items A, A and A, B. This is commonly done for landfill projects because there's a general construction aspect, which is the excavation and preparation of the cell itself. And then you have a liner company that comes in and installs the liner. So the reason these are broken up is we avoid any upcharges. What they're, they're called geosynthetic companies. That way they don't upcharge the general contractor and ultimately the city receives the savings. So at the general construction bid opening, we had five bids, which ranged from $291,032.56 up to $548,750. Hammet excavation was the low bidder and they are being recommended to complete that aspect of the project. That's line item A, A. For the geosynthetics portion, which is item A, B, we received six bids ranging from $463,619.28 up to $636,503.66. Clean air and water systems was the low bidder for that project and they are being recommended to complete that aspect. And then the third item, item 8C, those relate to construction administrative services, which are required by TCEQ to properly permit the project. Basically, we have to have a QA QC representative onsite at all times monitoring construction. So the proposal amount from Biggs and Matthews, that's the city's design consultant, is in an amount not to exceed $128,500. That does seem pretty excessive when you look at the overall cost of the project. But again, you have to have somebody onsite, which drives those costs up. So that's all within the overall budget for the project and we are recommending approval of item 8C. Construction itself is anticipated to be completed in late spring or early summer. So we should be able to start putting trash in the cell probably midsummer timeframe. The paperwork with the state does take some time to get approved, but we don't anticipate any major delays. So based on these total costs, the overall cost of the project looks to be just under $1 million. So we should realize a substantial amount of savings from the $1.425 million budget that was approved. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Garrett, how long do you think this cell will last?
This one, again, we'll have to have further discussions about the rates. You know, we are seeing almost double the amount of tonnage come in per day that we typically anticipate. But typically, I'd say this cell would last three to four years.
Are we checking to see that the people using this are not coming from out of the county?
So we do check that to try to get a feel where the waste is coming from. However, under our permit with the state, we cannot turn away people that are out of the county. So as long as they're bringing in permitted waste, we have to accept it. So there again, the rates themselves help, help address that. You know, right now, we have a very low rate per ton and so people are willing to pay the haul cost to get it here just because they're paying less dumping in the cell. But if we adjust those fees accordingly, that should help deter some of that.
How do our fees compare to communities around us?
Well, so we'll have a full analysis when we talk about this in March. But I mean, the per-tonnage rate is very low. We're at $55 a ton. We've got ranges, 75, 85, 95, I think all the way up to $120 a ton. And then if you look at the services we provide for the residential rates, you know, we are very low. But that's something we take pride in.
And I assume you can't select if you're out of the county a higher rate?
We could. That's just something that needs to be in the rate ordinance. So that's definitely something we can talk about. That does become difficult to enforce. You know, our scale house lines already back up, sometimes all the way back to 1631. So that's something we definitely want to take into account.
The requirement to have somebody on site, is that a state rig?
Yes, sir.
And these are state employees?
No, this is our design consultant. So it's a professional engineer that will be onsite monitoring things. But again, that makes it a lot easier to permit the construction down the road.
Garrett, is there any discussion about the fencing? Because I see a lot of trash and y'all are great about picking it up, you know, as soon as it happens, but that fence is not too high and it's going to be right on the fence. I'm curious if, what the cost for that would be. Does it factor in or?
No, we've looked at installation of berms to try to block some of that from the roadway, but just the costs were pretty exorbitant. That's something we can talk about. You know, again, that's kind of that long-term discussion because we do have a lot of wind-blown trash at the facility. So we've got a number of employees that in the afternoons, that's typically what they're doing, especially on windy days.
Inside facility on the fence or?
Outside, on K3 room, going out there with mules and stuff, picking up a lot.
And we have adopted that section of highway because of that, you know, knowing there's a lot of trash that is generated in that area or that's brought to the area.
It's very nonprofit to work hard for cleaning up those rides.
I'm also concerned, because this is our last cell of the landfill, correct? Unless we start?
No, that's a Phase Two. So basically, we have three permitted phases of the landfill facility. So this is the last cell in Phase Two. At the next point is further back, the tree area. That's Phase Three. Cells 10 through 13 are permitted back there. They're a lot smaller in size, so they won't last near as long as these larger cells. But again, that's why we want to look at the long-term plans for the facility before we move into that area. So that's why we want to have those in March, have those discussions.
Thank you, because I just don't want to get to the point where we're maxed out and then we have no choice but to transport, if that's what we end up.
Have you done, are all these businesses, ones that you've done business with?
Not the city personally, but the design consultant has reviewed everything and determined that they're all qualified.
Can I direct you just a little bit for a brief update on recycling? What's the current situation with recycling? I've read the comprehensive plan over the weekend and it says a lot about hoping that the community will become a model of recycling. Where are we?
So the recycling numbers have stabilized from the COVID timeframe, as you remember. Or you may remember, we had to cut acceptance of papers and plastics at one point just because there was no market and those materials were ending up in other landfills. So that has made a strong comeback. Overall, tonnage-wise, recycling makes up a very small portion of the total tonnage that we deal with. I think on a yearly basis, it averages about 10 years of life in the landfill that we're saving on an annual basis. So 10 years of life out of 365 days, or I'm sorry, 10 days of life out of 365 days is a pretty small percentage. Another thing we struggle with is the city's recycling center itself. It's just not set up to accept a large amount of tonnage. So that's part of that long-term discussion as well. And we'll be talking about that.
Is it something we should pick up on as a deep dive into that and with the possibility of a new facility, et cetera, et cetera? And do we know what that benchmark is that we would be looking for that we'd say, that's worth our effort? If it's not, if it's 10 days, could it become 90?
I mean, it's definitely something we want to talk about. So whatever we can do, you know, to improve the amount of tonnage or increase the amount of tonnage we bring in.
So I hear a lot of people ask me why that we don't take glass. Do we not take glass?
We do not.
Okay, because of all the obvious class that we have. So what's the update or what's the report on that? There's just no market for it.
So there's still no market and part of that, again, is the haul cost. There's no facilities close to process it. So the cost to haul that tonnage to a facility that can do it is very high. We are in discussions with a private entrepreneur, I'll call him, that's looking at potentially coming up with a business plan to take glass. So, you know, we'll definitely work closely with them. Hopefully that will work out. But again, at this time, we don't, we haven't figured out a way to be able to accept it.
Thank you. All right, we will need to take these one at a time. A, A, consider the approval of the construction contract award for the City of Project for Landfill cell, cell number nine as presented.
I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve that contract as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 8B is to consider the approval of the geosynthetics contract award for the landfill cell number nine.
I move that we approve the contract with geosynthetics for landfill cell number nine.
Second.
Motion second to approve this as well as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 8C, consider the approval of a professional services, that is construction administration for the City of Project for Landfill cell number nine as presented.
I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve this professional services contract as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All motions carried unanimously. Thank you, Garrett, for getting us under the wire on that with the money. The money that was budgeted. All right. We need, item number D is to consider the approval of the professional services contract for the storm sewer project.
So Mayor and council, we talked about this one recently, late last year. Again, this is the North Lano Storm Sewer Project. It will address a longstanding drainage issue at the intersection of North Lano and College Street we're all familiar with. So I'm happy to report that on December 21st, Texas Water Development formally approved the grant funding and zero interest for a loan. Those amounts are $390,529 in grant funding and 2.12, or I'm sorry, 2.12 million in a zero interest for a loan that we'll receive through the Flood Infrastructure Fund from the state. So the approved fiscal year 2023 budget includes $350,000 to allow for design of the project to begin. Now that everything has been completed with the water development. Now that everything has been completed with the water development board, we can actually get started on design. This item before you this morning is a proposal from Freeze and Nichols Incorporated, who prepared the city's drainage master plan and who has also been assisting the city in our grant application and working through this process with the state. Kim Patack is here this morning from Freeze to answer any questions you might have about the overall process. But staff is recommending award of the contract in an amount not to exceed $349,200. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did you say it was an interest freeze?
Yes, zero interest.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The loan from the state of interest on it, zero. Nice, nice.
Very good deal. I did want to mention, we're looking at a timeframe. I think design is hoping to be completed by the end of this year and then get started with construction early next year, probably complete around summer of 2024.
Will it affect the street? Will there be a street closure or anything like that?
Yes, there will be some lane closures associated with this, but we do anticipate maintaining two-way traffic at all times. So it'll be very similar to the 290 East Waterline Project that's just about to get started.
Make a motion, we approve the west for the, I'm sorry, I'm wrong.
Contract.
The North Lano Storm Sewer, which is item D.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the professional services contract for the Storm Sewer Project on North Lano as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Garrett. Thank you, council. Item nine A, out of nine. Did you want to speak and congratulate us on our brilliant decision?
Just wanted to say thank you for being here.
Where did you come from? Austin, okay, well, just spent a few bucks. Thanks for being here.
I was here yesterday in Austin.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you for being here. Clinton?
Hi, sir, Mayor Council. I will start with an update on short-term rentals. This is a standing item on my update every council meeting. And if I could talk just a little bit about code enforcement first. Mentioned this, I think, just about every, every time we've given this update, the last three or four times. But code enforcement, generally, we've divided between minor and major violations. Minor violations being trash, water, parking and so forth, more of the code enforcement officer violations, the violations they catch during the day. Most of these are being routed through the administrative adjudication process, the new process that we started late last year to streamline getting those through so we don't clog up municipal court. Most of those people are paying online, so there's no hearing. On PD side, the more major violations, specific SDRs, noise violations, those are being routed through municipal court. So as I've reported in the past, most of the code violations that we have, the minor violations that we've had with respect to SDRs have to do with trash. A few parking issues here and there. I might ask Anna to give a little bit more detail, but depending on the month and how much activity there is, we've been up to about 50/50 STR versus non-STR minor code enforcement violations. With respect to the major violations over the past three months, we've had three formal noise violations. That's all we've had with respect to SDRs. We just had one chief 10 days ago, about a week ago or so. So that makes the third one. And it's after hours, typically associated with the drink, hot tubs, things like that. And typically, the person knew the house rules going into the rental, but they were outside making noise, whether it was a nuisance or metadecibel level. It was an issue for the neighborhood and it resulted in a violation. And again, those are being routed through municipal court. And we've had on two occasions that I know of, non-response from that local contact person when PD tried to call them. So that's an additional violation. Anna, Garrett, do you want to add anything on the code side?
I was just looking at from the beginning of the year. And Clinton's right, it's about half and half. We have 32 total waste violations and 17 of those were from SDRs. We've got a couple of unpermitted SDRs that are going through the process through municipal court. But all in all, it's busy, but not out of the ordinary busy.
Okay, on the permitting side, you've been getting updates from Garrett, daily updates on where we are. We're making good progress. We're able to manage a lot of this manually, although it's not perfect. Manage a lot of it manually as we're weaning off of Granicus, still relying on some of that functionality for our internal purposes. Weaning off of that while at the same time, working with an outside individual to develop a software specific to our needs. And I have Mike Hogan with us today. I'd like for him to give the council just a brief update on what he's doing and where he is with a timeline for trying to get that working in the hands of city staff. If you're interested in that, I can have Mike come up and again, just give a brief overview. This, so this is the parallel path that we keep talking about. We have Granicus, which is software as a service. It's not customizable. It does not meet our needs. We cannot, we cannot change our processes to make the software work for us. They've admitted that we were misled to an extent from the very beginning in terms of that product meeting our very specific needs. So we're sorting through some of those details right now. And we're working with Mr. Hogan while at the same time, our IT department is involved in a white, what's called a whiteboard exercise with city staff that manage these permits, trying to get an idea of all of the different processes that we're using, all of the different needs that we have. And trying to establish an understanding of that so they can help Mike with the development of his software and also any updates or modifications to that in the future. So Mike, if you could, give just a brief update to the council, again, regarding what you're doing and just a general timeline of when you think you might be able to have a workable solution.
So in the past few weeks, we've been meeting to specifically discuss the data items that are being collected to meet each of the stakeholders. So not only the permit holders in the city people, but also permit managers like Absolute Charm, who are doing bulk management, to identify where Granicus dropped the ball. And what we could do maybe to either modify processes our end to fit Granicus, or if there was another software piece out there that would work, or to go back to the original plan, which is develop something custom just for Fredericksburg that would be flexible enough to meet conditional use, zoning restrictions, things like violations, being able to restrict permitting based on violations at properties, things like that. These are all things that didn't necessarily exist in the software, these other third parties, because, well, they're Swiss Army knives. They're really tough to get every use case involved in the software. And so rather than having a thousand bells and whistles in the software piece, we're looking to streamline it down to just what Fredericksburg needs to get the job. So the past few weeks has mainly been about investigating and documenting the data that we need. And we're basically just months away or a couple of months away from actually releasing the software that you guys can put into place. And that's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike, are there cities that use this Granicus software that it works for them?
There are cities that are using it right now, and actually, you guys have already met with some of them who are employed the software. I haven't talked to them directly to find out what their experiences are, but my understanding is everybody's having to make some concessions in their processes to fit the Granicus software. And that originally, when Granicus promised how the software would work based on Fredericksburg's needs, it didn't actually turn out that way. They had restrictions on some of the data that just wasn't compatible with how we use permits here.
We did consult, consult. We did get some information from colleagues when we were at Texas Municipal League Conference first of October, and the report was fairly consistent about issues with Granicus.
Did you talk to Garrett, use Granicus?
Yes. I have a comment before we move on to that topic. Sorry, thank you, Mike.
Sure.
Any other questions, Mike? I want to commend those SDR task forces that's been meeting since first of November. There've been a couple of members who have spent a lot of volunteer time drilling down on this data and trying to find a way to put it together that it's useful for us to file our final report in the task force, which is coming up. And there are, they have found, I won't quote the number, but they have found some that are operating without a permit and some that are operating beyond capacity. And we know that because of these people are skilled at looking at how they're advertising. And so we know that there is an enforcement issue ahead of us and we need to become much more aware of that and obviously empower our enforcement apparatus to take care of those people. And that's something that we'll be looking at in terms of specifying what constitutes a revocation, for how long, et cetera.
I have that question for Anna too about the unlicensed ones. Do they go through the municipal court? Also, they don't, they don't get to go through the administrative, you know, they go directly to municipal court.
So far, that's how we've been handling it, yes.
And do we shut them down then if we find unlicensed ones? Or do they just pay a, do they, do we still have the backup we had in municipal court? I mean, do we shut them down quickly or do they keep on renting and making rental income in an unlicensed STR and we can't do anything about it except write them tickets?
No, there's no enforcement.
Well, and just let me clarify. So as Anna mentioned, currently, those are being routed through municipal court. The backlog has been reduced drastically. Judge Becker has done a really good job of reducing that backlog, but it does take time to go through that process. Unfortunately, the way the ordinance is worded, if we're working towards a suspension or revocation, it has to go through municipal court currently. We are looking at some potential solutions to be able to route these minor violations, even though it's regarding a permitting or hot remittance issue. You know, if they're advertising 12 occupants when they're only permitted through 10 for 10, maybe it's not a huge deal. We're looking at options to route those through the administrative process. So we could find them, but hopefully address the issue in a timely manner rather than having it sit at municipal court. However, we couldn't end up revoking it through that, through that process currently. So that's where if there's a second violation, we see them still doing it, that's when we would probably route them through municipal court again.
But you're talking about revocation of permits. I'm talking about unpermitted. When we find people who haven't even applied and just are advertising and running an STR without going through any of the processes, what happens there? We send them to municipal court, but they keep operating while they're waiting to go through the court process?
Currently, so that's why we're looking for a quicker process. So again, the administrative process is a lot smaller fine potentially, but at least it lets them know, kind of puts them on notice. And hopefully, that will help address some of those issues we're seeing. Because the task force has identified a good number of them that have issues and we're aware of some of them. Some of them are currently going through municipal court. We are trying to figure out a way where we can have a better status check of those cases, you know, if we know summons has been issued. So I hope to have an update for you this week on that.
Thank you.
And these are all things that are topics of discussion of the task force to decide where is the trigger? I mean, if we can, and of course, they have the opportunity to present a case to municipal court if they have to say that they weren't intentionally hurting or whatever. But that's for the municipal court judge to decide. And we're looking at what would be the point at which we would say, you do not have the privilege. You violated the code.
And the task force is coming with a report in February?
Yeah, we're wrapping up our work in a couple of weeks.
Right, right.
Yes, it'll be first of February. That was the 90 days that you all gave us.
And thanks to all the volunteers who are working on that task force.
I want to take a moment to say that it's been, I'm very, very grateful to the number of people who've given hours and hours to the task force. Is you have Connor?
No.
Okay.
I have one. I just wanted to also thank staff. I know y'all have devoted a whole lot of time, regardless of if you're STR specific or not. As I'm looking at the website, it does get a bit confusing of who I'm supposed to call when, if there is a concern. Click on STRs, you can click on short-term rental concerns. And then it's just not clear. Like, am I super mad, so I call police? Like, what are, what is after hours? Like, it's not specified. There's some email addresses, but then there's phone numbers. It's just, it might help y'all as staff in having that be a little bit more clear, the permitting section, the code enforcement section, and hopefully limit some of the confusion as y'all try to navigate what goes here. But thank you for all your work on this.
Right, and I want to give a special thanks to Shelby and Janelle, Shelby Collier and Janelle Chapman and many other staff members who have been working on the Granicus issue since April and have been on the front lines of this series of frustrations and so forth. So hopefully, we're going to a point where that's going to be serving us well to whatever the options are. I want to get on the record, Clinton, before we move on this issue, because we do have a citizen comment that we, with the expectations of beyond the record. And this is from Doris Ernst, and I won't give her address, but she said she has four SDRs in her block. This morning, there were 13 cars at two of the SDRs. That is far too many in homes of this size. Is anyone policing the SDRs at this time? If not, the police could be watching as well, since I consider all those cars a hazard while driving. Every time these SDRs are rented, they're rented, they cause a parking problem, which is dangerous. Someone needs to be aware of how many people will actually be inside these homes. And should water and sewer use be considered when this occurs? That's written comments on this topic, okay? Clinton?
Okay, and I want to say again, thanks to the task force group, but especially city staff. We've gotten really behind on a number of really important tasks at City Hall because this has been taking away so much time. Our finance department's been working around the clock for the last four days. Laura was up here until dark Saturday and Sunday. So thanks to the finance staff for all of their hard work on this. Again, we've hired three new employees. You met the code enforcement officer today dedicated specifically to this. We'll introduce you to the new hot collections specialist, and then, of course, the STR specialist and Mr. Amersky handling the administrative adjudication process that a lot of these minor violations are going through. So a lot of additional staff added just to deal with this particular issue. I thank you also, Mr. Hogan, for your work so far on the software. So he's doing that just to help us out at this point, and we couldn't thank him enough. So thank you, Mike.
Clinton, on the, you stated on the major violations, three noise violations over three months or four months?
Three months.
Okay. I've been made aware of several other noise complaints, but the individuals have not called the police. And I'd just like to stress that if we're not, if we're not made aware of these violations or if the police are not called, then we don't know about it. And so the situation, we don't get a true reflection of what the situation really is. If you, if we have three major noise violations in three months, I'm not sure we have a problem. But I know there's more than three over the last three months. Don't hesitate to call the police and let them know that there's noise next door or across the street or block over, whatever. We need to know about it if we're going to correct the problem. So your help with that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Any other comments on that topic, counsel?
Okay, water supply update. And again, this is intended to be a primer for the council going into our next meeting where we will give a much more substantial update on our water supply in both our short and long-term weather forecast. It's the early version of the presentation we usually give a It's the early version of the presentation we usually give a little bit later in the year with the Underground Water District. Because of the situation that we're in, because we have not improved since summer last year through the fall, pretty dry fall, and winter this year, we, we feel it's very critical to start talking about some of the water conservation measures that we're contemplating currently. So I think I've talked to most of the council individually, but I just wanted to get on the record as stating that the Water District, the Hill Country Underground Water Conservation District, during their last board meeting a couple of weeks ago, voted unanimously to proceed with an additional 90-day moratorium on the wells in the county. That's the third consecutive 90-day period for a standing 200, what will be a 270-day moratorium on the wells out in the county, based on, again, the lack of rainfall, the drought situation that the entire state of Texas, especially this region, is in right now and so forth. So Chris Canazy and I attended that meeting. We did talk just a little bit about potentially moving into stage four watering restrictions, the next restrictive watering stage. We talked about some other water conservation measures that we're currently engaging in. One that I, in particular, that I feel has a major impact on water conservation is the leak detection survey that we recently started. I've talked to the council about this in the past. We did something similar, starting back in 2014. We were able to reduce our water loss from 12.5% down to under 2%, saving enough water to accommodate 1,000 additional residents moving to Fredericksburg for about eight or nine years' worth of growth. We're back around 8% right now. We think at the end of this effort, we'll be able to get down back under 2. So that in itself is a water conservation savings. It's, it's just the right thing to do. The second course is stage four. Stage four means that we're petting that outdoor watering time in half instead of four hours in the morning and four hours in the evening. It is only four hours in the morning. So we'll talk a little bit about whether it makes sense to do that in the morning or the evening again. That's come back up. It essentially cuts that outdoor irrigation in half. It also limits filling swimming pools, Jacuzzis, tubs, things like that. If you're refilling them, you can do that on your watering day, but filling them from empty may be a little bit of an issue. So 70% of our water consumption is from outdoor irrigation. So again, we're trying to target that, again, to conserve water. Getting back to the data that the Water District reviewed to make the decision to move an additional 90 days for the moratorium. The short-term weather forecast, even the long-term weather forecast shows most of the state to be hotter and drier through the summer than normal. I announced the last time that we ended up with 13.5 inches of rain in 2022. Our average is about 30. So we're way behind, way behind on the recharge of our aquifers. We're at all-time low levels in both of our aquifers. So according to the data, again, it looks like we might get out of this dry, hot, dry cycle toward the end of this year, the fall of this year. Start getting those normal rains again, transition into that El Nino cooler, wetter period. So it might be another long summer. We are set up very nicely with the additional water line out 290 east, an additional effort that we will be undertaking very soon. You'll see an item in front of the council is a look at a study of an additional well field, likely a little bit further out 290, something we started talking about in 2013. We just completed 20 million in projects this last year. And we're set up perfectly to develop new water a little bit further out. That's really what we need to spread out that supply so that we're not influencing our, our well fields when we're pumping really hard in the summertime.
I have two things about that. Counsel, would you know that I'm working on bringing in a couple of experts in this field? I have a workshop with us on water management and water resources, specifically in Gloucester County, and I'd like to get that on the calendar sometime in the next couple of months. But you'll be hearing more from me about that. Also, I want to ask a question. If I have a property, a residential property, and I have a small pool, and I decide I need to drain it or acid washing or whatever you do with pools, I've never had one, so I don't know what that is. But I assume that at some point you have to empty it and, and make it nice, the coating or whatever. And I'm not talking about a large pool, I'm talking about maybe a lap pool. And I just, what are my options? Do I drain it into the street and then refill it? And do I need special permits for that? Because I do know that that happens. Tell me, tell me what we should know and do as, we should be aware of the city council with these water restrictions.
Well, in, in terms of draining a pool for that type of maintenance, I think that we consider those on a case-by-case basis. The pools at our parks, we have to maintain those once in a while. Quite frankly, if we emptied them, they deteriorate much, much more quickly than if they're full.
I'm talking about residents.
Right, so residents, again, I think, you know, on a case-by-case basis, we don't want someone to end up with a very large repair bill because they, they couldn't do some type of routine maintenance. In terms of draining on permits and things like that, Chris, do you want to talk about that?
Is it a special permit?
Not a special permit, no, sir. New pools constructed under the current code requires then the plumbing to drain into the sanitary sewer system. Okay, so if you were to build a new pool right now, the drainage system is required to be into the sanitary sewer system, not down the street. However, there's a ton of pools in town that were built under a code, earlier code, that don't have that ability. So they are drained into the street. And a lot of times, we do get a notification from those folks, from that pool company that's doing the work, because a lot of times we get a call about a water leak, and so we want to be aware of those. I would say that we don't see a whole lot of that. I mean, there are, it's a seasonal thing. I don't know how many pools we have in town, but we might get 10 or 12 calls a year. Now, not everybody calls us either. Some people just, you know, take care of business at times. Under the new, if we do go to stage four, draining and refilling of pools would not be allowed. It would be prohibited. So that doesn't mean if you have a pool that's full that you can't, you know, top it off for any evaporation loss during your day of watering. But if you built a new pool under stage four, you wouldn't be able to fill that pool.
Well, I'm talking about a pool that exists, not building a new pool.
Correct.
I don't know under what, I, I witnessed this personally, that's why I'm asking. And it was in last August. So a person can just decide to do that on their own? Do they need to call the city and say, hi, I'm draining my pool in the street and getting it? Or that?
They don't have to. I mean, it's, it's obviously a nice.
So what I'm hearing is it's allowable?
Right, yes, sir.
Under stage three?
Yes, sir, okay.
And under stage four?
I hear that.
And Mayor, I will say that Emily brought to my attention that there was a pool that was drained and the water was flowing into a creek nearby. So some of those may have an environmental concern associated with them. So that's something that I have on my list to visit with Chris and others about to maybe have some type of permit, maybe make an amendment to the ordinance requiring a permit to drain a pool, specifically for those types of environmental concerns, damaging adjacent property and so forth. So that, that's on my list.
Thank you for allowing me to insert mine.
Clinton, you were in my neighborhood or something, because I just saw that happening.
It was not in your neighborhood.
Clinton, quick question on the county moratorium. Is that for just residential or is that residential and commercial?
So that is for, it's only for permitted wells? So if, if you have a small acreage, say five acres, it would not include that sort of well. You can still drill a small well. I think it's under 18 gallons a minute is the, for some reason, that number sticks in my mind. Or if you had a well that went out on an existing, you could get a permit to drill that well.
Okay.
If you look for a livestock water trough or something like that. This is just for permitted wells over a certain flow rate. Okay, so large developments or if a vineyard went in and they needed a well, those sort of wells are not allowed at this time?
Okay. We, we asked if that was limiting development, had anyone been knocking down the door trying to get a, get a permit to do a large development out of the county? And the Water District said no. But because this is potentially a county issue, we had talked about doing this presentation as a discussion in a joint meeting with the county just so they hear what we're doing to try to conserve water, what the Water District is, is doing, why they're extending that moratorium, what the situation is out in the county so that they have a better understanding. I talked to the new county judge about that over lunch last week, and he would appreciate that, that sort of update and participation. So again, for the county or the council to consider potentially having a, an item on a joint meeting coming up sometime, maybe next month, to discuss this water situation.
Just one thing to add, you know, to put it in perspective as far as their aquifer levels. We're about 20 feet lower than we were at this time last year in the Canalwell Field and about 12 feet lower than we were this time in the Old San Antonio Road well field. If you recall, last year was not a good year either for rainfall. So we're just that much further behind. If you look at the trend line of that aquifer over the last five years or so, it has continued to trend down. We never rebound quite where we were the previous year. Which we'll have all that information and those graphs and that data at the next council meeting for you. But, you know, since 2019, we have received below-average rainfall. The previous three years, it's basically been around 20, 20 to 21 inches. And again, so we're 10 years, or, excuse me, 10 inches lower than we really need to be. And so this isn't just a 12-month drought, and we've been in this for four, four or so years, unfortunately. So hopefully, we keep praying for rain. Hopefully, the El Nino does come back this year and we do get above-average rainfall again, get in that wetter period. But just looking at the aquifer, generally speaking, it's continuing to trend down.
We're beginning to work on materials to distribute to the community regarding stage four. We finished stage, stage three for about 12 years now, and some people still don't know we're in stage three. So we're working really hard to provide those very, a very clear message to our water customers that we are moving into stage four. We really see no way around it at this point. And again, that decision point will likely come sometime in February, March of this year.
So would you repeat the percentage of daily pumpage during watering season of city resources that goes to watering our landscape?
Yes, sir. 60 to 70% of our water consumption is for outdoor residential irrigation, 60%.
So that includes the sprinklers at the Hoover House?
That includes the sprinklers at the Hoover House if you're connected to city water.
Okay, yes, sir. And I don't have a pool.
So pools don't? Pools don't account for, hotels really don't account for all of that much. We'll provide a slide that shows the breakdown during our presentation coming up. That'll show you the distribution of that water demand across our different districts.
Thank you, Clinton. Go ahead.
Okay, I wanted to give the council an update on employment vacancies and also positions that we have recently filled. Again, we're trying to get new employees in front of the council. So when you see a new face at City Hall or out in the field, you know who these folks are. We're very proud to have these new folks coming on board. And we've, as you know, have, have added 13 positions to the budget, on the current budget. So currently, we have seven patrol officer positions in ED open. This includes three new positions. We have a new position, food safety inspector position, that we're having a difficult time filling, getting qualified applicants for, and filling. So we're working with Kelly Ulfers to, to try to get that position filled. We recently had a resignation in fire EMS, a paramedic, so we have one position open there. We have a street department crew worker position open due to a transfer of Darren Eckhart from the street department into City Hall. He's our new hot collection specialist. We'll introduce him next time. We have a sanitation department crew worker position. Again, this is due to a transfer. Bert Luna transferred to the police department. So we, we picked up on one of those vacancies in the police department there. Of course, you're familiar with our city attorney position being open currently. We have four new applicants currently. And at the end of this, if I could ask the council for a little bit of direction, we've had a light discussion about potentially hiring a firm to help us fill that, that vacancy. We have four new, new applications for position, yes, sir.
Excuse me, I'm trying to make sure I heard you correctly. There's seven patrol positions open and three are budgeted. Is that what I heard?
Three are new positions added.
Got it. And that's in that set?
This year.
Correct, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We have a big retirement coming up in finance. I'm going to wait for her to, to be present before I announce her name. But we have that one coming up as well. And we filled a number of, of positions, positions that have already started. Of course, our recreation coordinator, Haley Olden. We have a new network administrator in IT department, Brandon Gold. You've met him. New city accountant, you haven't met Bridget Clint. We'll have her here next time. For the, of course, the hot specialist, we'll have him here also, new SDR specialist. New court security officer has been hired. Three new patrol officer positions were approved in the budget. Two new police cadets to start academy in February. New code enforcement officer who you met tonight, and our new water department crew worker who you also met tonight. So a lot of, a lot of vacancies, but a lot of new folks coming on. And it appears that we're, we're really having a hard time with that health department position. And I can, I can tell you, just talking to other city managers close to us, everyone is having a difficult time hiring police officers currently. I don't think it's even a regional or a statewide issue. I think it's, it's more of a nationwide issue currently. So we're hopeful, and again, we have a lot of people interested in the organization that are transferring in some of those positions. But circling back to the city attorney position, we have a handful of what we feel are, are good applicants right now. I talked to Mr. McCamey just a little bit about kind of what the outlook may be for getting someone interested in coming to work in that position for the city of Fredericksburg. We're going to continue that conversation. But I'd be interested in your direction from the council if you're interested in hiring a, a firm to help us attract a new city attorney to the organization.
Have we seen all four applications?
Not at this point. We just received one last week. And again, I think we have a couple very good applications at this point.
Go ahead and see those.
Shouldn't we look at those four?
So we'll, we can distribute those to the council and review that and make a decision at that point.
That sounds good.
If we, thinking about hiring a firm, the firm that we used to find Brady Clausen, I was on that search committee for the CBB and they did a really good job. I bet Brady can tell us.
Search wide globe?
Thank you.
Were you happy with their work, Ray? Of course, you asked. I'll take a moment to acknowledge, President McCamey is our end today.
That concludes my update, unless you have any other questions.
Anything on those issues, counsel? All right. Items for future agenda?
Okay. Coming up, February 8th. Of course, meeting minutes from this current meeting and our special meeting coming up at noon. We have an item which is an order calling. We have an item which is in order calling the May 6th general election. As Emily mentioned, consideration of hot recipient process and deadlines. Presentation by Shelley Goodwin. CBB lease agreement, that may be one that moves to the second meeting. I've not had much time to visit with Mick regarding some of the specifics. We need to get back to Brady on that particular item. We're going month-to-month on that lease currently. Cross mountain replacement. The cross at Cross Mountain Replacement, final plans. Not Cross Mountain Replacement. And the easements that were discussed regarding the Hill Country Moro Hospital, the electric easement, easements and other utility easements. And then we had the water supply update presentation plugged into this next meeting. Would it be the council's preference to try to schedule a special joint meeting and one or two items? Or would you like to keep that item on this agenda?
Chris, I'll go with you in what I'm looking at, too.
Any preference there? You want me to just keep it there for a placeholder right now?
We're talking about doing the meeting with the county, for the weight. Just do it all at the same time.
Okay, maybe a special meeting?
Yeah.
A little bit toward the middle of the month? Sure, I can talk to Daniel and see what their schedule looks like. Try to get something nailed down.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I have a question about the hot. When I was doing hot applications, I don't remember, we always got them right before the new year and got them in December 31st or whatever. And the council dealt with it in January and then they had the awards in February. That schedule has now been moved back.
We changed that process because the contracts don't start, you don't get paid for the next year until May the 1st. So we moved the process back.
Okay. And I did have one item on the February 21st agenda under executive session evaluations. That will be the city manager, the municipal judge. There will be an operational overview discussion with the council, not an evaluation of the municipal judge during that meeting. Just wanted to make that clarification. Do you use a self-evaluation tool or use a bit? Do I use that? I've used it in the past. The council would like me to do that, certainly.
I just wonder, what is the normal process? Is it whatever we bring up?
Never set through one with the council?
You've never been evaluated for that?
Not by the council, no, sir.
Clinton was appointed, he wasn't given.
I know, I'm asking a general evaluation of top-level employees. What's your, Sharon, you've done?
I've done both, but I don't find the self-evaluation very helpful. What's really helpful is setting goals at the beginning of the year and then using that for the evaluation tool. And we don't have that. So we're kind of, what we ought to do in this process is just kind of give our general impression of the work that he's done and then set goals so we'll have something next year to use.
Okay, so there's no real.
So then we're all on the same page.
So we all come with our own?
Yeah.
Just be ready, rain's one of those.
That's going to be a tough one, sir. Mayor, if I could also ask the council, for the next meeting coming up in February, we had talked about having an item, discussion item regarding a refresh of city council priorities moving into the new year. Not necessarily items that are budgeted, just.
Put that on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Whether it's parks or facilities or transportation. If I could add that, if we could have that discussion, then you might be able to pass some of those goals along to me during that second meeting in February. But you might ask Bobby, he's been through the evaluation of the city manager the last how many years, Bobby, you know how that goes.
I've never, I don't remember using a self-evaluation.
Well, did the council come with a tool, any sort of?
We had a list of goals and we evaluated that.
Was it individually done by council?
Yes, yeah.
Were they goals that the city manager knew about?
Absolutely.
To start, and then you were evaluating how they met those goals?
That's correct.
But we don't have that at this time, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? We do have a list of projects and objectives that the former city manager did not complete, that we marked a few of those off the list, and we completed the rest of them. I can provide the council with that list where I picked up where he left off, if that would be helpful.
Okay. So counsel, you want to just go ahead and create your own? And this is his first city manager assessment. And create your own and then come to the meeting with it? Or you want to share it? Or you want to send it to him? Just talk to me about what you prefer. I'm okay with what you want to do. What should Clinton expect?
I'd be happy going into executive session where we all have our own impression and present it, since we don't have any criteria to follow.
Everybody's nodding their heads, that's great with me. Thank you, Sharon. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Then we're at item number 11.
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Motion second to adjourn. All of you ever say aye?
Aye.
We will meet at noon with PNC regarding the comprehensive plan. Is that here? All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Good day.